David, I'll look for a head nod from you. Are we ready to begin?
Yep, showtime.
Welcome. I'd like to call the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting to order. We continue to meet via live teleconference pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N two nine twenty, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel twenty or streaming online through the city's website. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by five P M via email to the Planning Commission Clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city's website along with the agenda and linked to this live streaming video, so that all planning commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submittal information. The Planning Commissioner Clerk will note the comments for each item. This evening, we're also joined by Commissioner Vu. Again, welcome back. With that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First up is general administration function, or A presentations by public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
There are no public comments.
Okay, we'll move on to B correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commissioner Secretary and Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lebig. I think the only item I have of note to tonight is that we had, we are still expecting Commissioner Austin to be here, and she had expressed particular interest in the housing element subcommittee item, so staff would request that we move that item to the end of the agenda and then keep the other items as they're currently listed, but just do the housing element item at the end.
All right, thank you. I think we'll take up that then at the end of the general administration function before we move on to the consent agenda if that works for you.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to general administration function, part C, which is disclosure of ex parte communications. At this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on items on this agenda. For hand waving, C, none. All right, with that, as Mr. Tilly pointed out, we've had a request to move item number three on the regular agenda, which is the Housing Element Subcommittee Report to the end of the agenda. Unless there are any objective objections, can I get a motion to move item number three to the end?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Castillo.
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Sablon. Mr. Clerk, can I please get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Commissioner Vu?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfeld?
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
And Chair Lebig?
Aye. All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is only one item consideration and approval of the minutes from the August twentieth, two thousand and twenty commission meeting. Mr. Clerk, before we do, I do have a comment on that. This is still draft. Bear with me one second. Item number three. If, if it is possible, all the components are there. It would be nice to have a little bit more structure to this one. I think this is new as we have written comments embedded in the description. I think, I think it would benefit to having the, the introduction summary such as the commission conducted a public hearing on, and so we can state the item, and then maybe some structure to separate out the commission action from the comments. Without getting into deep, like too many details, one thing I've thought of, an easy fix without changing this is just to format it as if it's a quote, you know, an intended quote to make it easier to read. That was my only comment on, on this item.
Okay, yeah, we can make that correction.
Any other comments on item number two? Okay, with that, I would happily seek a motion.
A move.
Moved by Commissioner Sternfels?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vu. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Vu?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfeld?
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon?
Epstein.
And Chair Lebig?
Aye. All right, thank you. With that, we move on to the regular agenda. We are going to pass over item number three. It's going to be moved to the end of the agenda, so we'll go on with item number four, which is public hearing regarding thirty-two forty-five Marshall Road tentative parcel map. And I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Hardy.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Yes, before you, is a tentative parcel map to subdivide ten acres at thirty-two forty-five Marshall Road into four equal parcels of two point five acres. The property is zoned residential estates, which requires a minimum lot size of two point five acres, unless you do clustering, and it is within the rural core area and is consistent with that intent. The property will have frontage both on Otis for lots one and two, and lots three and four will front onto Marshall. The site itself is relatively flat. There's no structures or any real improvements, formerly used farming in the past. The really only items of note would be on lot four, there is a seventy-five foot drainage easement for the main drain or access and maintenance, and in addition, a twenty-foot wide gas easement all on, encumbered on parcel four. There's no other notable components to this map. However, I do know that the applicant and their representative engineer have brought up comments regarding item twenty-one or condition twenty-one, excuse me. I'll let them address that during their comment period. With that, you know, staff is recommending approval of the request as it meets all the findings, and they all can be made. If there's any further questions of the commission, I am happy to answer them. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, are there any public comments that have been submitted on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay. Mr. Hardy, are, is there an applicant presentation on this, or are the applicants, or is the applicant available just to answer questions?
The applicant doesn't have a formal presentation but does want to address item twenty-one, whether the applicant or her representative labeled CNA, Steve. One wants to speak on their behalf.
Okay, with that, thank you. I will open the public hearing before I request anything from Steve, CNA, or Dana. Are there any questions about this project in general of staff before we hear from the applicant? This is a question to the planning commissioners. It's okay, C, none. The public hearing is, is open, so with that, if the applicant would like to bring up their, their concern or request, I'm not sure exactly how to phrase that.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Norman, and I'm a CNA engineer, and we are representing the owner of the property on this application. As far as the conditions, we are good with all of them except the last condition twenty-one, which is, I will let the owner speak to it because it was a major condition on the previous approval. This had a tentative map on it for eight lots, and we would never build that because of some issues. So she has been working with Public Works to try to see how they could develop this differently. And so I will let Dana discuss or explain to the commission her concern or your, or information about condition twenty-one. Dana, you want to explain what you have on that?
Yes, thank you, Steve. Good evening, commissioners. I'm basically requesting the removal of condition number twenty-one, please, under grounding the existing power lines. You know, we have been at work with this map for so many years now. It was, we were in the process of doing the eight parcel map in the past, and I was told by Mark Collier and other planners that if I dropped that map and I go to the four two-and-a-half acre slots, that I would not actually have to underground those because that is what kind of broke the deal the last round with the eight parcels, making it an actual subdivision. No matter what, there's no way around it, but doing a parcel remap of four two-and-a-half acre lots, I was told that electrical would not have to be undergrounded. I mean, this will, basically, the property's not worth anything if those have to be undergrounded. It's really not possible to do so financially for anybody, not even developers. To be honest, nowhere along Marshall Road, for as long as I've lived in West Sacramento, which has been over twenty years, and many developments have actually happened, nowhere along Marshall Road, along that side, has there been any undergrounding of any electrical. We're talking about huge posts here. Even Bridgeway Lakes Community, the posts are still there. And anyways, that's, that's all I'd like to say, so thank you.
All right, thank you. With, with that, we'll, well, let me bring you back to the commission. I'm going to keep the public hearing open so we can ask questions of the applicant's information come up. So at, at this time, are there any questions or comments from the planning commissioners? Mr. Castillo?
Just to clarify, is, is the post or the utilities that are required to be underground for each of the parcels or just the two parcels that the utilities currently sit on? I'm just, I just want to get some clarification in terms of what, what is the requirement?
Just along Marshall Road, not along Otis. They're on the opposite side, opposite side.
Yeah, and this is Steve Norman. Again, if you look at the tentative map, it does show the existing poles that are along Marshall. They run from east our part of our parcel across the parcel and continue westward for another quarter mile. They're just a continuing, continuous power line. And we have four, four actual power line poles on our property, which we have to go underground, go across, and they go back up, up again, again, above ground. So that we create one unit section of this long power line that would drop underground. And like Dana said, no other developments or anybody up and down that line has undergrounded any of those major power lines, so.
I, I actually don't know if that's true, though. Mr. Tilly, maybe you can, can clarify. If there's a development along Marshall or Otis, the, if it's a development like a subdivision, it should have its power lines undergrounded. Did I, did I miss something?
Yeah, that is, that is the standard, you know, standard way of going, and as a rule, we always look to have utilities undergrounded whenever possible. In this particular case, I'm kind of trying to pinch it for Mark here a little bit. But there's, it's, this is always complicated because it's not so simple as just to take down your three poles. Sometimes it has a snowball effect, you know, going down Marshall. The power lines in this area and partially why they're still up is there, this whole line is related to a pump station that's over at the pond detention basin over in Southport Business Park. And so that is scheduled, that is, needs to be rerouted, and that's a responsibility of the master developer out in S I P to get power to that, and then many of these lines may become obsolete. There's still a whole row, row of poles that run behind the homes on the western side of Bridgeway Island, and then they come south and to Marshall and go around the corner. So eventually, that will occur. We are having trouble with P G N E actually being able to energize new lines and streetlights out in Southport Business Park as we speak. There's some streetlights that are out there, and we just can't get them turned on at this point in time. So in this particular case, you know, the commission does have the authority to waive that undergrounding requirement that's solely your discretion and say that historically for smaller rural maps, that has been the commission's preference to do so over the years, but it, again, it is solely up to the commission, you know, to decide whether or not to do that in this case.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sablon?
So does staff have a recommendation on that condition on? On whether, do you have an opinion on that, on the request?
Well, it's, it's staff's always recommendation is to underground wherever possible. However, the commission, you know, certainly can, you know, waive that.
Okay. Do you have a little more background on, on what would, what staff told the applicant on shifting from eight to four? Was it that it wouldn't be required and there would be discretion, or was it?
I believe what she's referring to is when you're doing a parcel map here, which is, you know, you know, less than five lots, improvements are typically deferred till the time of site development. So presumably, in this case, the four lots, you know, they may be sold to individuals who build a home on them at some point in the future. That, that home, well, that home builder or home buyer would be responsible for any necessary improvement. Contrasted with an actual subdivision map, which would be five lots or less, any public improvements are the subdivider's responsibility. So, and those would have to be constructed or at least bonded for with the subdivision improvement agreement before that map could go final and thus have legal lots of record that could be sold. So in this situation with the four lot map, improvements would typically be deferred to the time of site development, and that could be one lot at a time.
Just for clarification, Mr. Tilly, the subdivision map is for five blocks or, or more?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I think I heard it the other way, but. And then the other thing I, I did want to bring up is we, we do have, we do have the authority to waive this. I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that we've waived this typically, but we have postponed it either to, well, to the point where, when, when the surrounding poles have been undergrounded. That, I just wanted to throw that out as an option. I'm generally, I'm also generally in favor of, of undergrounding as we, as we develop, especially as we work on our city's resiliency in the future. I think undergrounded lines are just safer, more, there's, and more stable.
Yeah, and I'm working on trying to get Mark on the horn. I would like to be able to provide his input on this before we take any action on this one, if possible.
This, this is Steve at CNA. Does the city have a method of deferred improvement for undergrounding which would take place in the future, like, like the chair says? You know, once, when everything goes under, that these people would pay their fair share of that cost at that time when the stuff does go underground, if it ever does? Is there a method for that in place?
Yeah, Mr. Tilly has his hands full. We, we have done that.
Yeah, under that scenario, probably the way it would most likely occur would be a future assessment district. And so what, I think what we would probably look to do in this, in that scenario would be to have the, the landowner execute a waiver of right to protest of formation of a future assessment district should one ever, ever happen. So, and right on cue, here comes, here comes Mark.
I'm here, I'm very sorry.
No problem, Mark. Your timing, you're, we're talking right about your matter now and the utility undergrounding. Mark, I tried to explain, as I recall, how this line relates all the way back to that pump station and around the detention basin in S I P. Was that correct?
Well, a portion of it does on Marshall Road. The portion of the line that is on this project's frontage has nothing to do with that. It's actually the western leg of the overhead lines further down the road that built at the S I P pump station.
So the, Mark, for your benefit, the applicant has, has requested that the commission consider waiving the underground requirement?
Yeah. Yeah, and just in case you're not aware, I'm sorry I missed the first part of the discussion, but, you know, this project first came in and it was a parcel map, tentative parcel map, and it was approved without the requirement for undergrounding in that form, and then it came in at a later date with a subdivision map, larger number of parcels, and the condition was placed on it to do the undergrounding. So the history with, you know, we have a tentative parcel map in front of us now. The previous tentative parcel map was approved without the undergrounding requirement.
Okay. Mark, while you're, while you're on the line, and maybe David and I, I do see Commissioner Sternfels would like to say something as well, but there, there are other currently undeveloped parcels around this one, and we have permitted those in the past to be subdivided. I'm not sure if the undergrounded, undergrounding condition was standard at that time or, or not, but as those sites are developed, they, to my knowledge, the, the line would need to be undergrounded on those parcels as well if they're to be divided, developed. Otherwise, they are also within open space area in some areas down there, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah, and that, I mean, that is the standard requirement. The municipal code does require for subdivisions, whether minor or major, to underground the overhead unless waived by the planning commission.
Mr. Sternfels?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Collier, for the additional information. Can you give us a sense of timing of the other two parcel maps, just so we can have a good sense of history here? Where, was that first parcel map, you know, five years ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago?
Oh, gosh. I would say that the, the first tentative parcel map was, my best estimate, I'm sorry, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I would estimate it was seven years ago possibly. And then the subdivision map was probably five years ago. The applicant, if they're on, could probably give specific dates.
The original map was two thousand and six, and then two thousand and nine was Henneger. Previously was River Glen, and then in two thousand and fourteen, Kathy took the project before the commission. We're basically moving the project, either the parcel or the subdivision, but you can't have both. And so the eight parcel map essentially was, died with all the extensions, and subsequently, since that time, the parcel map died as well. So the last approval was two thousand and fourteen.
Correct. In two thousand and fourteen, I dropped the four to continue with the eight parcel, and then since speaking with Mark Collier and developers, it made no sense to do the electrical underground, and I was told that if I go back to the four, that it has been waived and I will not have to do the undergrounding.
In March of twenty nineteen, we did, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
In March of two thousand and nineteen, we did do the, you know, the vote update. So if we had the discussion in two thousand and fifteen, it was under the previous zoning ordinance.
That's, that's likely entitled, the subdivision titled fifteen or sixteen, right, Mark?
Yeah.
And this, the underground requirement has been on the books essentially forever, so it comes up on most rural maps, and we see it a lot in Washington, too. We believe one of the last items we took up in Washington. So really, at this time, you know, the commission, you know, should, you know, try to decide how they want to go on this one. You know, staff, you know, staff's position, it always is to underground. We certainly recognize there is, you know, significant costs associated with that.
All right, thank you. I think I'm going to bring it back to the commission for deliberation at this point. I can leave the public hearing open if we would like to be able to ask additional questions, but I would like to actually just get feedback from, from the commission so we can move forward towards a vote. Okay, Mr. Sternfels?
Yes, I'll kick it off because no one else is jumping. This is a, this is a tough one for me. Mainly because of the location of the parcel, and I know we, we have waived a couple of these before on, like lot splits, but if you look at the locations of most of them, those, the last one I can think of is for Gregory or somewhere where the lot went deep, and there was no, like, there was no benefit into undergrounding up with a deep lot split where no one was going to ever develop behind, and it just had road frontage. But in this case, this, this lot is surrounded by other land, and I know that it's, it's currently got its own zoning and, and general plan designation, but I feel like making the decision on this one sets the tone for anything that may happen around it in the future. And so it kind of, it gives me a good deal of pause to want to support the applicant's request and, and we are away from staff's recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Leonard? Commissioner Leonard appears to be frozen, so why don't we move to Commissioner Sablon, and I'll come back to Commissioner Leonard.
It looks like he's back, I think. Oh, well, I, I just had a question on, on the deferral you mentioned, Chair, on, so if we did that, it would be, they would underground when the lot's next to it underground? How, how would that work?
It could work with a recommendation from us. It has, we've been able to construct some language in the past that has allowed for a deferral of that. But as Mr. Tilly points out, it is complicated in this case, I believe. And so it's, it's difficult to create these kind of conditions on the fly. It's, in my opinion, it, it would be better for the applicant and staff to work through a condition like this before coming up to us because creating conditions on the fly, we can also, we can often actually create an issue rather than resolve one.
And then if there was a deferral, is there, there are cost savings, like economies of scale if they're done at the same time? Or would it still be the same thing for staff? Or I guess it's just us, so, yeah.
Mark is, Mark is on the line. I think I could possibly answer that, but Mark, are you able to handle that question? If we, if the commission were to defer the undergrounding to a date when the rest of the line is undergrounded, the cost would still be on the applicant, but at that time, would there be cost savings to the applicant?
There's always cost savings and, and economy of scale, the larger the project is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
This is Steve at CNA. You know, we would be willing to continue the matter if, if the commission is open to looking at some type of a deferred agreement that we can work together with Public Works and something that works for everybody and come back. We're happy to do that, if that's an option.
All right. So before, before we do take any action, if it is looking to go that way, I would want to make sure that the commission has interest in that before, before we extend the public hearing. has interest in that before before we extend the public hearing or continue the public hearing. Because it would, I would just be very careful in continuing a public hearing when the intent isn't there. And then we just create a bunch of work for people and drive up the cost with with no, no, no change. So, Mr. Mr. Leonard?
Yes, I wanted to ask on this deferral, would that manifest itself in the form of an assessment district? Or is it just a future or beholding the property owner to a future payment that they're on the hook for, that they have no warning about? And at that time, may not even own the property anymore, or the property? What is the mechanism by which we secure that future participation?
I can speak a little bit to that. This is Steve. I've been involved in deferred agreements and I've been doing this a long time. Typically, deferred agreements go on title, just like an easement or a right of way. It goes with with the project, the property as it's sold. Which means when you go to sell that, people are going to see it on their title, you know, see it on their sale, the title report, which would mention exactly that they're on the hook for any future improvements or undergrounding of the of those lines. And it would be up them to make a choice, do they want to buy a piece of property with that entitlement stuck to it or or walk away? Because it can adversely affect selling the property. A lot of people don't want to buy properties with deferred agreements attached. But it's done. I've seen it done.
Okay. So when I look at a property like this, and it's got the land use designation of rural residential and the zoning of residential estate, that shoehorns the landowner into a designation that doesn't provide enough density for for cost effectiveness of, of, you know, the policy, you know, meeting policies that we have in the city. Now, it's a tough call as I'm, I'm, I want to go both directions on this, and I know we can't. But if the landowner would be willing to participate at a future time and to put this on title, I think that would alleviate the concerns of the council of, well, I can only speak for myself, alleviate my concerns. Now, if, for the sake of the council, if we were to continue on and not remove this condition, I wonder if this property would develop. So, you know, it's a, it's a double edged sword that we have to be careful and analyze what happens with unintended consequences of just blindly denying their request. So that's all I had to say on that one.
Thank you.
Good to say, I mean, develop developing these properties are expensive, especially when you have a smaller property like this one. And this isn't going to be the only expense. My my concern, which I didn't bring up earlier, was the connection to sewer. I know they're proposing septic, but that's equally not easy these days to to get. And sewer is going to be challenging and expensive as well. So I think in this area, the these open lots face challenges. And this is, this is a subdivision.
And again, this is Steve. I would have this conversation with Dana, my client, to let her know placing deferred agreements on title is done. But it 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 can be difficult to sell properties that have that stuff attached to them, you know, when you go to buy it. And keep it, but it does make people aware that they're on the hook once they buy this property. It can be difficult.
I have. So so the 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 intent is to subdivide the property and then sell them off individually to be constructed?
I, did you answer that?
Yes, my plan is is to get the four maps and then just sell it. I've owned it plenty long enough and dealt with lots of developers over the years trying to get this going. The sewer system killed it and putting on the underground electrical killed it. So if anything's honestly ever be developed, I can't imagine anyone's going to want to buy the lot if they have to put lines underground.
Okay. I am going to keep the planning, I'm sorry. I do want to keep the hearing open, and the reason for that is because I do want to do a straw poll vote of the planning commissioners, whether or not we want to continue this one or.
Can I, can I make a comment, though?
Yes, Mr. Austin.
I was like, don't, don't straw poll yet. But I'll include some of that indication in there. So I just want to, you know, acknowledge what Commissioner Stormfells and Commissioner Leonard have said. I actually very much agree with some of the things they've talked about. So something that I think is, again, what kind of precedent are we setting when we make, if we are to make a motion or even continue the applicant's request? And I'm supportive of particular circumstances, just this is for staff benefit and also to kind of be on the record. So one of the things we've we've done, we've made accommodations for is for development like in the Washington area. So that's where the city may have some sort of role or responsibility to to do some, have a broader infrastructure plan. So I'm supportive of that because there is a plan to do something about it. I'm also supportive when there are some special circumstances and recognizing that, you know, owning and developing land is not, is not easy. It's inherently not easy and risky. I'm thinking more of infill and small sites or otherwise challenging sites. So it's another place that I might be more open to to these kind of accommodations. And again, recognizing that this is a difficult development, it's rural residential in a desirable part of town. And I'm only, you know, anecdotally, I'm only seeing more demand for this type of product, not less demand. So even if it's challenging, it, I I do, I do think that there are going to be folks who'd be interested in this kind of property. So so my perspective, the other thing I think about is what Commissioner Leonard was saying. And the entitlements travel with the land, not the owner or applicant. And so who's to say, you know, we may have some sort of agreement here, but that doesn't mean that the person who ultimately owns or develops a property is going to be the one that we're negotiating with. So I, that, that, that's something I think about. And so my preference is, if we would like to, I would support continuing this item. But I do want to say that I can't guarantee that even if some sort of agreement or additional details are worked out between the applicant and the staff, I'm not, I, what I've heard tonight, I'm, I'm still not convinced it's something I'd be in support of. So I just wanted to kind of share some of those thoughts.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to ask the the applicant, then I'm going to close, I'm going to close the hearing before we do the poll. So and it it does sound like the applicant would be willing to continue this item to a future date, should the commission need to to continue it in order to draft language to modify conditions? If not, I think it sounds like the committee, the commission will act on this tonight. So I just, I'm going to look at Dana just for a head nod for yes or no, if she is in support of that or if she really would like a decision tonight. Okay, I'm getting a, I'm getting a head nod, yes.
Continue.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this and bring this back to the the commission. Lost Mr. Tilly, I was going to ask him a question, but that's okay. I've actually, I've, I've been kind of doing a straw poll myself, and we are, we are very split on this, what what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm generally in agreement with Ms. Ms. Austin in that I, I'm not sure I see this as a special needs. This is a desirable piece of property in what is currently rural estates, which is more of like an open space feel between the villages. And if we, if we are going to continue to fill, you know, we have, we, we need to pay attention to the overall quality that's, that that we're creating down there. And to me, undergrounding is part of that quality. We have deferred it in the past, and again, it's been special circumstances. I'm not sure I'm finding those special circumstances. It wasn't presented that way to us tonight. So, please, but can, can I just get like a raise of hands from the planning commissioners if they would be more interested in continuing this and having staff come back with a condition that's with language that allows for a postponement of the undergrounding? Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing one, two. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So there's seven of us, and I have, I've got two that would be willing to continue. Okay. Ms. Sablon, it looks like you were trying to say something.
So I, I guess I would be open to it if we had more information on the the costs and how much would be saved and what's going on around there? And just how, what the, if we have any idea of when the other lots will be developed? And just kind of timing for that. But I expect just on a, it'll be too expensive. It's hard to rely on that.
That's, that's difficult to say because it's a future date, and you 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 won't know when when the lines will be undergrounded. We've looked at parcels like this prior to this project. I can see that those are also not developed. So it's just, it's very difficult to say, and what triggers it is also difficult. Mr. Tilly, I did, I did want to see input from you. It sounds like this is actually a little bit more complicated also than some of our prior postponements. So I wanted to get clarification on on what we're doing, whether or not this is really a feasible process.
I do think there's some middle ground in between the bookends of undergrounding or not undergrounding and leaving it at that. I like, you still like the idea of the waiver to protest assessment district, even though there's no guarantee, that doesn't mean there's any guarantee that that will ever happen or it may not happen for a long time. But it is a way to keep the property in play should a future assessment district come. But also still allow them to proceed, you know, with their project. So it's, it's no guarantee of of anything. But I understand the the cost here and unless it can be grouped with a larger, you know, undergrounding project. But I I think we should work, try to work on this a little further for you and come back. I don't think we can, you know, do this on the fly this evening. But I sense the commission, you know, preferring things to be undergrounded, but also recognizing the real world costs, you know, of that.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Mr. Castillo?
I guess really quick, sorry, I froze earlier. I would be supportive of, or I wouldn't be comfortable of voting tonight because it sounds like there is that middle ground that we can possibly come up with from, you know, like, like Mr. Tilly said, undergrounding versus not. And so if the applicant is is good with the idea of continuing to work with staff to potentially come up with a recommendation before the commission that would be kind of that middle of the road, I'd be open to hearing what that is. But and and it's also potential cost savings right at the end of the day. And so I'd be comfortable with that idea as well. I just wanted to say that I I froze earlier, so apologies for that.
Okay. Not, certainly not an ideal situation. Like I said, it's typically preferred to have something like this come up and be worked through staff in in advance or be be aware that this, this was coming. All right. So I, I feel like here two, two, two camps here, that one is to move staff's recommendation and one is to continue this to future date where staff can work through language to deal with the undergrounding at a time when polls on on either side are also undergrounded. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a motion at this point. I can move it.
There is a motion for continuance. We would request that be to October 15th.
I can definitely sense that that this is tough. So Commissioner Leonard, Leonard, I didn't mean to take your floor, so.
Oh, no, not at all. How about we just try? I motion to continue to the future meeting, or excuse me, to the October 15th meeting, to have staff and applicant in time to find that middle ground that we were discussing.
Okay, that's a motion from Commissioner Leonard.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Vu. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Leonard?
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vu?
Aye.
Commissioner Stormfells? Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair leaving.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Sorry, this one was a little bumpy and a little painful. And it's, you know, it's difficult to sometimes get to something. But I would much rather the details of this, this sort of thing be worked out, not live streamed. So thank you, and we will, we will see this item back on October 15th.
Thank you very much for your consideration. We'll see you next month.
Okay, with that, we are going to move to item, item number five, which is Presentation and Discussion of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, the final report. And this is going to be presented by Mr. Tilly.
Yes, I have a PowerPoint here, so it's, we can bring that up for you. Okay, thanks, Ben. This is a presentation that was largely provided by Ann Sossball and Kate Neese to the council last month. So I'm going to try to wing through this for you this evening and recognize that this one here, you know, this is a very important, you know, milestone in our region. So next slide, please, Ben. So as I, I think as everyone should well be aware, by events of recent even days, California often faces, you know, extremes. And under the premise of climate change, those extremes may get more extreme and more frequent. We're experiencing that statewide right now with the wildfires and their associated impacts. And it wasn't too long ago that we were in a drought condition. And hopefully, we will never be in any type of, you know, flooding situation such as on the lower left. The premise is that those things may become more more likely than they are presently. Next slide, please. This commission, which was organized by our mayor Cabaldin and Mayor Steinberg of West Sacramento, really tried to represent the whole region, you know, from A to Z, from people from all different walks of life. And so these are all the folks that were on the commission. And obviously, we were represented by council member Ledesma on that commission. But this group really did, worked hard and worked well together despite coming from very disparate backgrounds, and many of whom were not necessarily experts in climate change or any of the work that goes into climate change and the study of it. Next slide, Ben, please. So the commission put together numerous, what they called tax or technical advisory committee meetings that address numerous topics. These were often attended, as you see here, by numerous individuals from all walks of life, be it on transportation, be it on the built environment, community health, equity, financing, et cetera. So this was an overall approximately 18 month process. And all of this work that everyone that participated in this, including myself and Commissioner Austin and numerous other individuals, really came in what was formed now the Mayor's Commission on on Climate Change, their final report. So, Ben. So, um, Ben. So there, there, everything is related, in, in this space, everything is really, um, interrelated. Um, our built environment drives mobility. Um, and then also mobility and built environment drive our community health, both in a good way and potentially a bad way. And overall, um, these are re- really related to foundational principles. And really would be best looked at through a lens of equity. Next slide, please. So equity was not something this commission started with, but it became very clear very early on that matters of equity were completely interrelated to, um, everything we're doing climate change. Um, there is absolutely no doubt that climate change will affect people differently. And there's no doubt that people of lesser means may very well, um, be affected, um, even more so, um, than those who are more fortunate. So the commission boiled down in its, each of its sectors, uh, the, you know, the three standard recommendations. Um, so that went to both, uh, both cities. Um, these are high level. Um, we will, we would still need to drill a lot of these down to the ground in terms of our work. And, um, I, I do want to make sure I preface this that, um, as much as this information was presented to our city council and it was very well received, um, the council has not yet given a specific direction on which elements of this, of this report that they do want us to, um, implement, um, into our city, you know, operations and systems. So, um, this is really, and the timing of this works well because we are actually working on an environmental justice element for our general plan presently. Uh, that'll be something we'll hopefully bring to you all, um, early next year. Uh, but it's really building upon many of the equity principles that we already have in our general plan and that we need to work on, um, actually, you know, making them happen in the real world. Next slide, please. So the foundational principles, um, which are in the report all relate to these, um, various topics. And the outer ring being equity are really being the, the basis for which, um, we should be approaching, um, how we address climate change and resiliency, um, in our community in Sacramento. And, and really the way this report was put together, um, it really could be utilized by almost any community, um, out there. Not, not just here in our region, but all statewide and even, um, throughout the country. Next slide, Ben, please. So these are the three primary topics, um, that the, um, or sectors that the commission, um, looked at. Built environment, mobility, community health and resiliency. So, uh, we can get into those a little bit. Ben, next slide, please. So, um, the recommendations under mobility generally stand, really focus on mode shift. And why that's important is in our region, over half the GHG emissions, um, essentially come from tailpipes. So, um, the biggest, you know, the biggest, you know, area we really have to do address is mobility. And so the, the commission has recommendations, uh, and very bold and aggressive recommendations, which is what we were initial, all initially challenged to be, which was bold and aggressive by both Mayor Cabalden and Steinberg, uh, on day one of the first commission meeting. So as we look at the next slide, we can talk about how bold some of these things are. Um, on the left on the bicycle, that's the active transportation, uh, section. Um, we would, the goal there would be to get to, as it states, 30% of all trips by active transportation by 2030. So imagine all the trips that everybody takes, um, currently, um, be it to school, be it to work, be it wherever you're going. Thirty, imagine getting to 30% of all those trips, uh, in, in essentially 10 years. And then another 10% on that by 2045. This is a huge change. And there is a lot of math behind this, these numbers, so they look round. Uh, but there was a lot of number crunching because the ultimate goal there is to get to carbon zero in our region, which in, in, in other parlance is really carbon neutrality. So these are all huge things that will have, you know, could, if we were to set these as formally as goals, uh, could very well have big implications for us. And Sacramento and really the rest of the region. Uh, similarly to, um, active transportation, um, transit and short, shared mobility would also need to get up to, you know, 30% by 2030 and 50% by 2045. Um, this is a, these are big leaps. Um, right now, these trips are probably 5% or less. And so this will be significant, um, to be able to get there. But it really represents, um, what we would, what we would need to do, you know, particularly speaking as a region, um, to get to carbon zero. So these are huge changes. There's no doubt about it. And then lastly, looking at, um, zero emission vehicles up 70% um, by 2030. Um, that's seven out of every 10 new cars on the road being a ZEV. Um, that's a very aggressive, um, but that's what we were all challenged to do. And additionally electrifying fleets, um, which is actually something we're already working on with some of our, um, fleet-based businesses here in our community. Um, so I do expect to be able to make some dent on that, uh, aspect of things hopefully sooner rather than later. So next slide, please. So the built environment as this, this is our, this is our building stock exist, this really references our existing building stock and future building stock. It's important to reference that, um, that about 70% of our existing building stock will still be in existence by our horizon year in this project. So this can't all be done just with new development. You know, there will need to be, um, you know, retrofits and transitions as it states in there, existing residential and small commercial, um, to, to go all electric. Burning fossil fuels is, is another large source of emissions in our region. And going all electric, which is already start, the, you know, at the governor's level has already started us down this path by starting to mandate that utilities out there transition away from natural gas. And so we're already seeing some, um, acceptance of that. And a lot of our newer projects, uh, particularly infill ones in Washington are already wanting to go all electric. Infill growth, this is a, this is a big one for us too. We have been, we're very much focused on infill. Uh, but 90% of our growth would need to be infill, uh, going forward. And that, you know, we have a lot set up for that, um, particularly in Washington Bridge District, Central Business District, uh, Pioneer Bluff, areas like that. Um, but not so much in Southport. Um, you know, Southport is still, um, not, you know, there's a lot of greenfield out there still. So we will have to ultimately, you know, maybe grapple with that a little bit. And then Project Gable DMT, this is another one that was part of SB 743 that was passed about four years ago. Um, it now really is the name of the game in terms of your environmental documents in the traffic section. Uh, the environmental impact will no longer be measured by how long one might sit at an intersection waiting for a green. It will be based on DMT, um, which was really the associated emissions with DMT. That's really going to be considered the environmental impact or, you know, or, or not an impact. So, uh, we're pretty good on this, um, based on some of our initial research, um, especially in the north half of the city. As you move further south, um, toward the southern half of Southport, um, DMT gets pretty high. And, um, that's something we're going to have to, to work with, noting again that, you know, that hell pipes are over half the emissions in the region. Next slide, please. So community health and resiliency, this is, you know, another area that we've done a lot of work on. Uh, we have a whole healthy community element in the general plan, um, that we, for the first time, we put in in 2016. Um, but this also really gets into a lot of the equity issues as well. Um, there are a lot of tree deficient neighborhoods out there and, um, they do tend to be, you know, lower income neighborhoods. It's, it's, uh, if you look at it on a map, it's pretty striking. Um, we've obviously had a tree program in our community and will need to continue doing that and getting trees in as much as we can, particularly focusing on any areas that are currently tree deficient. Um, sourcing food locally is, is good from a, you know, local economic standpoint. Um, but it's the less transportation that we need, uh, the less emissions we will have. Um, this is a good way to sort of reinvest, you know, in our region. Um, and, but this is also not just about getting food, but getting food to people who are, um, you know, food insecure, uh, which, you know, we still have quite a bit of that in our region and even in our community. And this is something we're already working on, we already have, um, about climate vulnerability and adaptation strategies. Uh, we have a whole, um, vulnerability assessment that has been done. And we're working on now taking a lot of this information, this is part of our climate action plan update. Uh, we are looking at taking a lot of this information and then, then drilling it down to, you know, what our situation is in our community, um, you know, on the ground. So, uh, this is a particularly important area. Um, in the early days of climate action planning, which was only like 10 years ago, the whole, it, the whole area, what, whole notion was to try to reduce emissions. Well, that, that in and of itself has not been enough. So that's why, um, we really need to be addressing resiliency and adaptation, um, to climate change. Uh, and then just hope to mitigate the effects of it as much as humanly possible. Uh, but it's, it's pretty clear. And if you, we'll see in a commentary from our, our governor just recently regarding all the fires, climate change is very much here and thus, uh, we need to slow it, but we also need to learn to become more resilient to it. Particularly, uh, those, those communities, um, that are, are less affluent and their ability to be climate resilient, um, maybe, maybe challenged, um, when their, their, some of their primary goals is making sure that there's food on the table, um, a roof over their head, um, et cetera, et cetera. So next, next slide, please. So there was a lot of talk, uh, uh, about from certain parties once COVID came, because this process started before COVID and then continued on, um, through COVID where we met virtually, uh, the last, I think, three or four meetings of the commission. Um, there was some, um, chatter about, well, maybe we shouldn't be focusing on climate because we have COVID and that's going to affect us economically. Um, and if anything, um, the opposite is true, you know, a global pandemic is part of climate change and, um, could become more severe and more frequent if we don't continue to work on, um, climate change. And so this is a provider, a renewed emphasis. And if anyone had saw the presentation that Mayor Cabalden and Steinberg did on Earth Day back in April, um, this is a, a point they both made that the pandemic made the need to work on climate change matters even more critical, um, than it ever was before. So next slide, please. So the commission, um, to its credit, not wanting this to be a document that would just, you know, sit on a shelf somewhere, um, they really tried to establish some, some early, early projects that the cities could potentially, uh, work on or continue to work on with renewed emphasis, um, in the first, um, year. Uh, we have not, um, you know, received direction from the council, um, yet about any of these particular projects. Um, but these were all ones that were voted on the commission that these could be projects that could be done early on to, um, you know, try to keep the momentum going and, you know, try to make a difference in this particular, um, you know, fight that we have against climate change. Next slide, please. So we do recognize that we're going to continue to grow in our region and in West Sacramento in particular. So, um, but we need to do that in the right way. Um, and doing that, uh, with better transportation options, uh, different land use patterns, uh, different mobility options, um, are really where areas we've already been headed to, but, um, they're only more critical now, um, in the era of climate change, um, that we're in. So with that, I'm going to close my presentation. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this topic. Noting full well that, uh, once the climate action plan is ready, we'll be really to do a deep, much deeper dive into this with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Um, this is a public comment period, so we'll open the public comment period. Just for clarification, uh, Mr. Clerk, were there any comments on this item?
There were no comments on this item.
Okay. All right. So open, open to, uh, to the commission. I, I first want to actually start by just commending staff who also worked on this. Um, this is, this is a great document. It's, um, I, I think it's great that it identifies many of the constraints and challenges that we face, uh, in implementing such a plan. So it's, it's nice that we have a plan, but this document also acknowledges the challenges, uh, with implementing the plan, uh, including economic and public opinion challenges. Um, but I agree with, uh, Mr. Tilly, uh, inaction will undoubtedly lead to greater impacts. So we need to be steadfast in our understanding of the current science and plan for future so that we may be resilient in face of climate change. All right. I, I have more comments, but I don't want to be the, uh, the hog of, of, uh, the, the microphone. So, uh, I'm going to pass it off to, uh, Commissioner or Vice Chair Austin first.
Hi, thanks, thanks for that. And, um, I'll, I'll also, when Chair Lee Biggs says thanks to staff, I just want to specifically recognize the, like, incredible work of the local government commission, which is a nonprofit, sacred nonprofit that did the staffing for this work. Um, and then, like, I've said this before, Mr. Tilly put in dozens, hundreds of hours, like, really worked really hard, um, on, on this work. So thank you for your work on that. So, um, a couple of things, I'll just say some general statements and I might chime in after the other commissioners have a chance to, um, talk or add their questions. But I've been, I've been following this very closely. I served on the tack. I've tuned, I, I attended or tuned into almost all the meetings. Um, so I have a lot of opinions. Um, and then I'll share a couple of things for us to think about. Um, we talked about making bold decisions, but how that manifests on the planning commission is a lot of small, unpopular, important decisions. Um, and so, you know, don't be afraid of, you know, you know, maybe frustrating an applicant or irritating someone who's a resident who's providing public comment, because we really have to keep our eye on the prize and we need to think about the people who are going to come after us, whether that's people migrating to our city, um, or, uh, future generations. Because that's really what we're, we're really trying to plan for that. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is, um, you know, we talked a lot about the impacts of COVID and then the reality of climate change. Um, some of the work that my colleagues are, uh, my, my research colleagues and I are working on is really looking at, um, the migration patterns. And we are, I, I've mentioned this before, and this kind of leads into what we're going to be talking about, um, with the housing element, is, um, West Sacramento, we're, we're supposed to grow, like, I think we're supposed to grow what I would estimate probably 20% of our size in the very, very near future. So it, it's going to feel like a substantial culture shift living here in this town. And we're going to have a lot of in migrants from places like the Bay Area and people who've been displaced from, um, from places that have been decimated or even at risk of wildfire. So this is going to have some major implications for us moving forward. These things for us to think about, um, as we try and factor this into our climate action plan, you know, and the different aspects of the general plan that we'll be working on. So thanks.
Thank you. Um, next, Mr. Vu.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, David. Um, I know this has been a big passion project of yours, not just, this, this topic in general. So we really appreciate it. And, and this may be something that you're, that, that you'll touch on, you know, in later presentations, but no, were there, um, specific recommendations for specific communities, uh, in this plan? Uh, no, obviously, you know, hint, hint, uh, you know, anything recommended for West Sacramento? And, you know, perhaps, you know, light rail extension eventually into, uh, the city or, you know, anything along those lines?
Well, there, I mean, there, there was definitely at a high level and, you know, trying to account for, um, two extremely disparate, you know, cities, at least by size. Um, I can tell you that at the last meeting, the commission voted unanimously to add in one recommendation that was specific to West Sacramento and which was that the commission would, um, paraphrasing here, but essentially the commission would advocate for, uh, West Sacramento to transition to a more climate-friendly utility provider. Um, and so that is a, um, you know, one of the specific recommendations in there. And clearly that's not a new, not a new idea, but that it came from the commission, um, and unanimously supported, I thought was pretty powerful. Um, but it's really up to us to take within this report and then drill it down to, um, our level, you know, in our community. And that's one of the things we're working on now.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Leonard? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Leonard.
Okay. Um, I uh, I'm on board with all of the philosophical framework and with um all of the intent uh that this plan uh and this framework lines out for us. Um, so as I read all of these things, I'm in full agreement, you know, I'm nodding yes and understanding the big picture and what's happening. What I'm struggling to understand is how this does manifest itself in in actual uh code or general plan or climate action plan policies and uh municipal code changes and things like that. I I just want to take a minute to ask some questions hypothetically, and maybe uh, Mr. Tilly, you might be able to answer them, but maybe this isn't the right time. You know, I know we're going to have a lot of uh time in front of us. We're going to have implementation periods. We're going to be looking at things, as you said, in as a deep dive. But um just starting with mobility, when it comes to transit and we have a focus on that increasing, you know, the total amount of trips generated, I think 20 or 30% uh being transit. And yet we have our uh, you know, we have streetcar problems with um, you know, funding in the region and committing enough to to get us uh the the funds we need uh to to build that, you know. So on the one hand, we have a stated intent uh to increase uh transit usage and yet uh we have actions that happen. Maybe not our council, but other councils uh where we're, we're transit projects uh that would help meet that intent are being um are being um trashed a little bit by by uh not committing now the money that we need in order to get those projects up and running. When it comes to implementation of zero emission vehicles, uh, you know, I can understand it's it's an easy thing to do for us as a city, and maybe not even easy, but it's it's easier for us as a city to say that our city fleet would be zero emission vehicle. Uh, but it's not something that we could extend to say, well, all residents in the city have to drive zero emission vehicles by a certain date. And I kind of feel the same way about the building electrification in some cases. Because when it comes to commercial buildings and commercial kitchens, you know, we're still not there with the technology. Hopefully that technology catches up and we're able to do it uh in a, in a reasonable amount of time. And uh, when it comes to transitioning existing buildings uh to electrif- uh electrifying existing buildings. Um, there's also an equity component. There are some buildings that um in certain parts of town where um it's would not be economically feasible for retrofits to be all electric. And where I I would like to also echo the the concern about um which utility provider that we're um further committing to uh by increasing that electrical uh reliance. So there are a lot of areas here where, and I know I'm just um speaking, you know, kind of off the cuff on lots of topics that you've talked about. But there are things, there are themes that I would like to be paying attention to as we go forward in this implementation. So I'm able to understand how we take this theoretical framework and turn it into actual policy. A policy that works for uh various parts of our city, and we have different considerations in Sacramento. Um, but we also have to deal with these policies in relationship to our cit- to um uh to the city of Sacramento. And so there are just uh, these themes are things that I agree with again, but I'm, I I would really and maybe Bernadette Austin and maybe and Mr. Tilly have more insight as they participated in this the entire way on how these things, these philosophical ideals will translate into actual behaviors that, you know, show up in our code. And I'll keep an eye out for those and uh can't wait to to talk about each one of them as we attack them later on down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonard. Uh, Commissioner Stumpfels.
Yeah, I didn't know if Mr. Tilly wanted to respond to any Commissioner Leonard's comments first.
I just, I just wanted to say that um what you are grappling with is exactly what we are grappling with as well as to how are we going to land this plane um to do these things? Um, some of them are probably easier than others. Um, but you mentioned the utility provider, and one of the reasons why, one of the things that Councilman Medesma kept bringing up um was how much um other utility providers in the region help incentivize um folks to, you know, convert or do better appliances, um, you know, things of that nature. In some cases, those are substantial. Um, and other utility providers, you know, not as much. And so we definitely don't want to have this be a top-down thing. Uh, we really need to build it from the ground up and get community support and try to incentivize as much of these things as we possibly can. Uh, because that's probably the best way we'll be able to get, you know, maximum success. Uh, so most everything, if it's a new ordinance or if it's a general plan change, what a climate action plan, all that will come through the planning commission. Uh, you know, eventually, so there'll be ample time to weigh in those things, but um this is a tall order without a doubt. And um I definitely am also excited to work on it because at least I personally believe this is critically important.
Andrew, you want?
Thank you, Chair. I I share a lot of uh my fellow commissioners' comments, I think. While there was a lot of work put into this effort, it seems like the really hard, big lifting is just, it's just starting. Um, because now we've got to change, turn, turn a lot of broad policy goals and recommendations into a lot of smaller actions that are are largely inconsistent with how we've operated in the past. And um, I think one, one thing I would just think about as we move forward with recommendations is um, you can get really deep down the rabbit hole really quickly. Um, on particularly when it comes to measuring some of this stuff. So like I know when you talk about carbon neutrality and new buildings, I mean, you can get to the place where you're starting to measure transit distance of materials and that are coming to sites to build buildings and output of emissions from wherever they were, where the raw materials were made. I mean, this can get really deep and complex. Um, and there's, there's the merit in that for sure, but there's also a lot of actions that probably have more bang for their buck from a resource perspective. And so I imagine part of the big task here is going to be balancing all the different priorities and potential projects with what is going to no undoubtedly be a very limited pool of resources. And I don't know how we, how we do that easily. And and obviously, it's not our role, it's the council role, but but certainly we're going to get a lot of things coming our way that are going to be based somewhat of a framework developed to think through that. So just, just more food for thought than anything. I I was also really happy to see the equity lens because that's the other big driver, a lot of these uh potential policy choices that we could make in the future do have impacts and particularly economic impacts and how do you, how do you manage those and manage, manage through those and continue to create equity and equitable opportunities for all of our residents? Not just in the short term, but in the long term as well, it's really a tough balance. So looking forward to seeing proposals. David, do you have any sense of timeline when like I I know council still needs to approve some things, but is there like stuff in the hopper now the city is looking at that we'll see this year or is it a ways away?
Well, I mean, some of these efforts we're kind of doing in in some way, shape or form already and have been. Um, a lot of the community health and resiliency aligns well with our age-friendly work. Um, you know, we've been working on mobility options, you know, quite a bit, um, you know, with the uh and now the Lime Bikes, you know, coming back. Um, you know, things of that nature. Uh, but I really was hoping to get to council, um, you know, November, December. If, and, you know, see what, you know, kind of parse some of these things out. Uh, we can't do them all at once, um, but we can, you know, we can get a lot of them in the hopper and going, but I'm hoping, I really want to bring the the climate action plan work, which we're hopefully, well, we're starting to drill into these things um to the commission, you know, uh hopefully next spring. Um, but right now, I I really do need to get back into council and, you know, get a little, get a little further direction on how they might want us to, you know, start tackling this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, uh, Commissioner Sablon.
So thank you for your presentation, Mr. Tilly. It was, it's great. Um, the this report is great and it's ambitious. And as uh some of the other commissioners have said, it it is going to be difficult to implement policy-wise. I mean, looking at active transportation when you can't go outside because it's too smoky and, you know, mass transit when we have a pandemic. Just uh, it it's, it's going to be difficult to implement and it it's very important for us to do it at the local government level. Especially when we have certain leaders that think it's climate change isn't a real thing. And I think we, we definitely feel that now that it it is real and im- important to go forward with these, with these goals and implement them. And I'm looking forward to seeing how we um take on that challenge. So, yeah.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I think we heard a lot of great comments tonight and a lot of accolades to s- to staff as well. And I know uh, Mr. Ledesma, who's who sat on the commission for and represented our our city. Um, what I'm hearing, you know, of course, is uh, it's not time to think big ideas anymore. It's time to put our big ideas in into action. And we've been working on a lot of things over the past years. And I think it's been great that the commission has really kept their eye on the ball for for a lot of these components, such as the infill development and the reliance on uh transportation. And making sure that that we we remember that there are transportation plans uh or transportation projects coming forward that to to support the uh the infill development. It is now like, we, we have to just ensure that these things happen. Uh, the, our, our mobility, um, you know, needs transportation improvements or developments, need these transportation improvements. So uh, I also think, you know, the next step, let's get these principles aligned uh with our general plan. Not super easy, but we we do need to get these principles into our general plan. Uh, the general plan is more of an umbrella of our, our other policies throughout the city. I know the climate, climate action plan is important, but um, you know, that that general plan really touches on, I think, more. It's very broad. We are witnessing the effects of climate change every year and the ma- uh magnitude of catastrophic events uh is likely to increase. Uh, West Sacramento is not isolated from these effects. Uh, I know we're focused on fires right now as given all, given all the smoke, uh, but in fact, we're at great risk because of our location along uh two major rivers that drain the entire North State. So members of our community are also at risk uh from excessive heat days, which are forecast to increase. So I was happy to see in the mobility um components, uh, you know, kind of shaving those green, green belts. Uh, so important to just keeping temperatures down, um, using particulate matter in the air, shading, keeping people out, uh, active trans- transportation. Um, so yeah, we are, we are past the point to act, but it's not a reason to not act a- a- at all. So um, again, I want to commend the the staff for their effort on this task and uh I actually really appreciate the hierarchical hierarchical approach in in some of the sections uh focusing our attention uh to oh gosh, what am I trying to say? Uh, pro- appropriate measures that we need to be making, where where we should, we'd be putting our efforts right now. So um, I definitely look forward to to rolling up my sleeves. I know we have a lot of work to do. Uh, appreciate everything that's been done, but uh we have a lot of work coming our way over this year. The rest will be this year and next year for sure. At a minimum, so. Thank you. Uh, David, uh, is there any other feedback specifically that you're looking from the commission this evening?
Um, not at this time. Uh, this has been a very good discussion though, and I'm glad we had the chance to bring this matter up because it, you know, it is important and so much of what we do here at the planning commission, you know, goes, you know, right into this, you know, arena. And so we, you know, we definitely need to be conscious of these matters. So thank you for um allowing me to bring this to you tonight.
Great. Um, so with that, I'll close the public uh comment period on this one. And then we're going to jump back to item number three. Huh, those of you that thought we were done. So item number three is the housing element uh subcommittee report. And so uh, at this point, I I don't see the um, the staff representative of of the housing element, Mr. Uh, Huerta. Um, so Mr. Tilly, would you like to introduce this or um one of the committee members tee it up?
Yeah, just real quick, and I'll probably, I'll let the two uh two committee subcommittee members that were, that are here with us tonight um comment as well. Um, the housing element is progressing. Uh, we are on an aggressive schedule. Um, we are hoping to wrap it up at the um Housing Commission in October and then bring it through the Planning Commission in November, December. Um, we are really, really, really counting on um the commission uh being able to act on the housing element uh, you know, this calendar year. So we can stay on track and meet the, you know, meet the deadline for it. Um, but there's still a lot of work going on. Um, a lot more outreach is happening, you know, offline, outside the um, the meetings with the Housing Commission, um, some direct target additional outreach. Um, but we have a challenge. Um, our, our number this year for our planning period, which is 2021 to 2029 is about 9,500 units in round them. And so that's, last time around, it was around 62, 6300. So the, you know, significant increase. Uh, but it's also reflective of our community is having a lot of infill opportunities. So it's a big number. Nobody, nobody says we have to actually build 9,500 units. That, in the end, that's a market, market forces. But we have to show that reasonably that we have capacity for that many units. And so that's what we're working on right now with the land inventory as well. Um, so this is part of the general plan. It's very much in the, in the planning commissions, you know, bailiwick. Um, so we're obviously getting input from the other commissions as well, and especially the one that has housing as a particular focus. Uh, but we're, we really want to get this stuff um in front of the planning commission also as soon as the housing commission has completed its work. So with that, I'll turn it over to our our subcommittee representatives um to provide any additional input.
Okay, that would be uh Vice Chair Austin or?
I think we're looking at each other on our screens. Go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, please. You're the senior, the ranking member here. I'm happy to fill in after.
That's his way of saying I'm old. Um, yeah, so um I will start off by saying that our colleagues over on the it's not EDAC, right? That's housing, which commission? Housing?
I think it's Economic Development and Housing is their official name.
Okay, I think maybe it is EDAC. Okay, so the, 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 our colleagues over on that com- commission were like really, you know, informed and really enthusiastic. And the, and I don't think that the, the, the um, the consultant who was presenting this, I don't think they just said this. They, they they commented, I, they said, I just need to let you know that this is like one of the most informed groups I've ever, you know, engaged with. And so, you know, there was a really high level of like feedback and engagement going on. And so I'll share some of the high points of like what my take home was, and then Andrew can share his. Um, so as I said, that something, there's a couple of things that I really hammered home. We're, we're a population a little over 50,000. You add 10,000 units with at least one person in each, let's say two, maybe it's four. Like we're growing all, we're, we're projected to grow a lot, and that doesn't mean that we're going to be filling all of those, those housing units, but it's going to feel substantially different. And so a lot of the feedback was, how do we, like, how do we do this? What is your, what are your insights? Um, and so there was a lot of discussion around priorities, what's important to us, like the kind of cultural fabric of our community. There's a lot of discussion on who do we need to talk to, you know, who doesn't have a a voice of some of the groups that we've already reached out to. So I think those are really valuable discussions. And then I'll just say again, highlight a couple of things that were important to me. One is density, going back to our, our, our discussion. We're gonna, we are gonna have some upset people, and I don't want to characterize them as NIMBYs because, you know, I'm not sure I would want, you know, a four-story building going up next door to my house. So I understand those concerns, but just understand that, you know, you know, we, we're going to, we, we need to see something besides two-story apartments in Southport. We're going to see the equivalent of high rises along our riverfront. It's going to look and feel very differently. And then what I also said is, I'm all density, density, density. However, the natural qualities of our community are, to me, one of the things that makes it such a high desirable place for me to live, especially for me to raise my family. And so I said, while I really want density, I want to make sure that we have a buffer to the rural communities um that border us. Like I'm thinking, you know, to rural Yolo County to the south, so that we don't build to the very, very end of our community that we do have, again, maybe it's rural residential, but again, around our borders, and then highlighting the importance maybe it's rural residential, but again, around our borders. And then highlighting the importance of open space. We're surrounded by beautiful waterfront, you know, sensitive environmental habitats and also recreational areas. And so making sure that we're creating a buffer and protecting our open space from kind of privatization and also from development that doesn't, that isn't consistent with that sort of, with that, with that, that fabric of our community. So Andrew, what were your takeaways?
So I think it's important to share for the commission that this first meeting we attended was really like a feedback session for, for the consultants working on the Housing Element to kind of hear from the combined commissions on a variety of topics. So the meeting was basically a series of them posing to us these broad questions, some of which they'd already gotten some stakeholder feedback on, and then to kind of check the pulse on the stakeholder feedback and also if we had anything to add. I was very glad to participate, as I'm sure Commissioner Austin was. There was some great feedback from the Housing Commission members, but we definitely also had a lot of feedback to share. And we actually had some really interesting discussions with, across the two commissions on different topics, and had some really unique experiences that folks shared as well. The other thing I was really grateful for in kind of starting this conversation now is one of the things we brought up and Commissioner Austin mentioned it earlier was this idea of migration and how the pandemic and the shift to telework that's happening, particularly in the Bay Area with tech firms, how it's going to impact our community. And I, we, I encourage them, and I think it's important of me on this, and really having the consultants look at that as we're coming up with this plan. Because when we talk about creating affordable housing, it's affordable housing for whom? And housing for whom? And if we're, you know, we want to make sure that we're meeting our targets for the needs of our community. And that's going to be really hard to do in this environment where folks are, you know, picking up and moving from another area because they can live wherever they want, live mortgage-free in West Sac compared to the Bay Area, which is something we're already seeing happen. So I'm glad we're having this conversation now and we're not like three quarters of the way through the plan and having to deal with that. We're done already. But it was really robust discussion. I actually thoroughly enjoyed it. Two hours went by really, really fast. And we're looking forward to the next conversation we have with group.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. I think this is probably going to have to be answered by Mr. Tilly, but do we have capacity for 9,500 units without Southport? Because we have 90, the climate, climate, sorry, Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, but we just went through 90% of them need to be infill. That means, that means not Southport. So do we have that?
I would, the answer is yes, but also no. And let me, let me explain. We have capacity for that in well in excess of that, you know, in the general plan that we provided for, particularly if you think about Pioneer Bluff. But really where the rubber meets the road on this is this defined planning period. And can we reasonably say that these, you know, whatever part of town we're looking at, you know, has, you know, reasonable amount of infrastructure, the zoning is on the ground, and other factors that we could produce the housing units in this planning, in this time period, which is goes again until 2029. So there's always a bit of art and science in terms of, you know, which properties we include in the inventory. You know, last time around, you know, we did this eight years ago, it was, it was pretty straightforward. This time around, it's definitely going to be a little more challenging. Like, you know, speaking of Southport, I know we will include like Stolock, you know, in there, you know, for example, which is, you know, just barely over the border into Southport. But it remains to be seen whether or not we will, we will, whether we will or should rely on any other, you know, vacant land, you know, further, further south in Southport, given the lack of infrastructure in some of those areas. But then also if you layer, layer in, you know, the, the Mayor's Commission recommendations, we want to make sure that we're, you know, not sort of talking out of both sides of our mouths, so to speak. So we're crunching those numbers right now. Many communities, when they do this, find they don't have anything, and they scramble and have to run around and rezone or upzone a lot of properties. We're not anticipating doing that because we did that with the general plan in anticipation of the Housing Element, you know, rolling around, you know, a few years later. But it remains to be seen if we have enough that we can honestly count to get to our number and have that pass muster with the state. Should not go, you know, unstated that this is the only aspect of the general plan that does require formal state approval. So there is a, any land we include in there definitely has to pass a smell test. And we're going to get there, but we're going to need to be honest about the, how realistic some of these sites are, would be during this planning period.
Uh, let's see, Commissioner Castillo?
Quick question. How did we come up with that number of 9,000 plus for housing that may be needed at that time? And is that in par with a 20% increase that we expect in West Sac in the next few years? Like, is that a low number? Was there a higher number based on what's the land that's available or developments that are in process now? How did that number come about?
Well, it starts at the state level, and it's called the, it's called RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So the state determines through some, you know, magic formula, how much housing is needed statewide. And that's housing at, you know, all income ranges. And then those numbers are then further broken down by region to going to the MPO. So in our case, that's SECOG. Then SECOG takes that number and then further parses it out amongst the jurisdictions in the region. And it's a big fight every year because everybody thinks they're getting too big of a number. And everybody thinks that each city should get the same number and just divide it up equally. And that's not realistic either. So some communities probably shouldn't grow very much because they don't have infrastructure or they're more rural and we want to preserve farmland, you know, open space, you know, things like that. But we always get a big number. And it's, we are a growth city. We are directly adjacent to the primary job center in the region downtown. We have a lot of infill capacity. But, you know, what comes with this, you know, is we tend, we tend to be very, get a very favorable response when we seek transportation dollars, because, you know, we are accommodating a pretty good chunk of the region's growth, you know, in, in our city that still a young city and still only, still only has, you know, 53, 54,000 people. So it's, it's a formula, it's, you know, roll with, if you were here, he could, you know, bore you with it all night long. But it starts at the state level, broken down to the regional level, and then further allocated. And SECOG doesn't do that, you know, in a vacuum. Every city is represented in there. And there's numerous meetings that occur with SECOG staff about the RENA process. But it's really factors in also need, not just total number of units, but they are, that, that 9,500 unit is also broken out to, you know, different income categories as well. There tends to be a lot of emphasis on affordable housing during Housing Element for obvious reasons. But this is, this is addition to just total number of housing units that are necessary.
But Mr. Tilly, I just, I just want to point out, and I'm pretty sure that this is correct, that of the entire six-county region, the largest RENA allocation went to Sacramento and the second largest went to West Sacramento. That just, so to put that perspective, is that, is that right?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah. So if it's, if it's not correct, it's pretty close. So just to give you a sense, there wrote, wrote more than Roseville, okay? So more than Davis, like more than Out Grove, more than communities that are already substantially larger than us. And I agree, it's, so it's a, it's not, you're, you're not crazy. It's a, it's a really, really significant undertaking. Add to that the fact that we are bordered on three sides by water is also significant. But as David said, I, I think that between climate change, transportation, and frankly, I think it's going to be hopefully a really huge boost to supporting our local economy. I think we'll, we'll be able to get the restaurants that we want to see and some of, you know, the type of neighborhood serving retail we want when we grow our, our residents in that way.
Thank you. Thank you both for attending and for, for your feedback on this. Any other questions?
It just sounds like that having, having a subset of our planning commission participate on that is helping. And I'm hoping that when, when we're ready to bring the full draft Housing Element to this, to the planning commission, that will not be in step one, or square one, will be a little further down the path with the, you know, leadership from our subcommittee members. So I'm, I'm grateful that we had that idea and that the commission, our planning commissioners were willing to take on that extra duty. I think you probably have one more meeting with the Housing Commission next month. And then hopefully after that, we'll be here at the planning commission with the full document.
All right. Well, thank you. Moving on. So the next item is just general administration function, part two, informal discussion. If Bernadette's not going to talk, I'm going to say we should, we should acknowledge Vice Chair Austin. She, she stepped up and helped host or manage three separate sessions for planning commissioners at the State American Planning Association Conference, which just wrapped up yesterday. Did a great job on.
I'm really tired. Thanks, Ross.
Obviously, I mean, it was, it was unique because it was virtual this year, which definitely brought challenges, but also advantages, because a lot of us could attend where maybe we wouldn't be otherwise able to because of travel, travel considerations. So, and again, thank you, thank you, Ms. Austin, for, for stepping up and doing that. That was, I think it was probably very, very helpful for other planning commissioners who did attend the conference this year. So, and West Sacramento, just got to say, guys make me proud, really. Your understanding of the process, how everything goes. We do have a really great commission here. And I think I recognize it, this is a terrible thing to say, but I recognize it and appreciate it when, when we step out of our little bubbles sometimes. And also, Mr. Tilly, we, we do remain the only jurisdiction that is board members. Sorry. We have a board membership to APA. And I think that is great and very advantageous for our planning commissioners.
Another example of how West Sacramento fights above its weight class.
Any other informal discussion? All right. With that, I will close tonight's planning commission, I will, I will close tonight's planning commission meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you.